All right, it's 7 o'clock, so we'll call this meeting to order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, everyone, for joining us this evening. Al, can we start with roll call, please? Al, are you there? We can't hear you. Go ahead, Al.
Okay, this is roll call for the regular City Commission meeting of February 8th. And I can't see real good, so I'm just gonna call everybody. Benson?
Benson here.
Benson is present. Brunick?
Brunick here.
Brunick is present. Sarda?
Sarda here.
Sarda's present. Mybaum?
Mybaum is present.
Mybaum is present. Minor?
Minor, present.
Minor is present. Moser?
Moser here.
Moser's present. Shram?
Shram here.
Shram is present. Weber?
Weber is present.
Weber is present. Mayor Johnson?
Johnson, present.
Mayor Johnson is present. City Manager Leon?
Leon is here.
The Manager Leon is present. City Attorney Denherter?
Denherter is here.
City Attorney Denherter is here.
All right, you have before you the minutes of the work session of January 25th, as well as the regular meeting of January 25th. What is your pleasure?
Moser moves the minutes.
Benson, second.
We've got a motion and a second. Any commission discussion about the minutes? Al, roll call, please.
This is roll call of the minutes of the work session and the regular meeting of January 25th. Sarda?
Sarda, aye.
Sarda's aye. Mybaum?
Mybaum is aye.
Mybaum is aye. Minor?
Minor, aye.
Minor is aye. Moser?
Moser, aye.
Moser is aye. Shram?
Shram, aye.
Shram is aye. Weber?
Weber is aye.
Weber is aye. Benson?
Benson, aye.
Benson is aye. Brunick?
Brunick, aye.
Brunick is aye. Mayor Johnson?
Johnson, aye.
Mayor Johnson is aye. Motion for the minutes is passes 9-0.
You have before you the schedule of bills. What is your pleasure?
Benson, second.
We've got a motion and a second. Any commission discussion about the bills? Would anyone in the audience like to address the commission about the bills? No? Dave, anyone in YouTube land?
No comments about the bills.
Thank you. Al, roll call, please.
This is roll call on scheduled bills. Mybaum?
Mybaum is aye.
Mybaum is aye. Minor?
Minor, aye.
Minor is aye. Moser?
Moser, aye.
Moser is aye. Shram?
Shram, aye.
Shram is aye. Weber?
Weber is aye.
Weber is aye. Benson?
Benson, aye.
Benson is aye. Brunick?
Brunick, aye.
Brunick is aye. Sarda?
Sarda, aye.
Sarda's aye. Mayor Johnson?
Johnson, aye.
Mayor Johnson is aye. Roll call on scheduled bills passes 9-0.
City Managers report.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, Members of the Commission. Our mission statement is to provide exemplary experiences, services, and spaces that create opportunities for everyone to learn, engage, and thrive. Just a couple of things for you this evening. I hope that you all had a chance to look at our sales tax. We had some good news in the sales tax world come out today. We were up for the month of January 5.48%, so almost 5.5%. The total tax due was $1,033,945. And I believe Al had said that is a record. Is it not, Mr. Eric?
Correct.
So that's good news. We'd like to see that. The first and second penny together was up over 6%, 6.01%, but 6%. And then our triple B pulled up. It's still in the red. Was down 3.88%. However, I think, given the situation that we're in, we can still say that that's a very positive result. So let's hope that going forward, we continue to see that kind of return for our community. So if anyone has any questions about sales tax, I'm happy to answer them. I did not have a chance to get on Department of Revenue yet and look at the sales tax that's remitted from the, I guess, non-resident vendors or the online sales. So I have to still yet look at that. And I'll give you some information on that if it's up here at the end of the week. Snow and snow removal. As you can imagine, I've gotten some feedback on that over the last couple of weeks since we've met. We've had some snow events. Some we've launched chemical attacks against, and others we've actually removed the snow. There was some debate as to whether our last plow was the right choice or not. You could probably ask 100 people, and 50 would've said yes, and 50 would've said no. The thought from Adam Huberman and Corey Potts and his crew was that with the weather that we were going to have, which we're experiencing now, that snow wasn't gonna go anywhere. So it was good to get it cleaned off the roads. Of course, we could not know that we would have another snow shower here twice this weekend. But I thought that that was the right thing to do. So we're doing what we can against Mother Nature, but she doesn't always play fair. So I just wanted to offer a little more explanation for that. And we have been treating these lighter snowfalls with sand and chemicals. So that's our thought process when it comes to that. Typically, if it's over two inches of snow, we do plow. But once our weather turns, that may change a little bit as we're far enough along. We believe in the winter that the sun should get higher and warmer, and hopefully we don't have too many more events. But March and April can be snowy months as well. So we have two men in blue with us this evening. So Preston Chrissy, our SRO, is here. I'm sure all of you know Preston. But I would like to just say, if you have not been on social media or on the Parks and Rec webpage, he's competing against Dr. Dave Withrow for dollars and funds to be raised for the Guppy Grant with the Boys and Girls Club. So he's behind right now, I'm afraid. He's trailing Dr. Withrow. So we gotta take care of Preston. So if you have a chance to jump online and vote with your pocketbook to see Preston be the first one go off the high dive, I believe, at the Huether Family Aquatic Center, I think we'd all like to see that. So it is a friendly competition, but it is a competition. So we hope that you will vote early and often on that. We only have one petition returned. We do have a couple that are out that we know of. Again, people can pick them petitions up for City Commission until, well, they can pick them up now, but they have to be returned, I believe, the last Friday of February, which I believe is the 26th. Thank you. So 5 o'clock, the 26th. And we do urge folks that are running for City Commission to take those, bring those back a little bit early so that signatures can be checked. And if there's any issue, they can have another opportunity to go back out and finish up, as you all know. So April 13th is the election, and absentee ballots are available as well for folks that aren't quite comfortable coming into City Hall to vote. So any questions from the commission, I'll definitely take. Otherwise, I'll let you get to your agenda.
Any questions for the City Manager? All right, then we'll move on to public appearances. This is a time when members of the audience who wish to address the commission about an item not on tonight's agenda can do so by stepping up to the podium. We do have Kurt Bernard in the room who'd like to address us.
Hi, gang. I see that tonight you have, this is Kurt Bernard, sorry. I see that on tonight's agenda, you have the first reading of the extension of the mask ordinance. And before we get to that, I'd like to have a request, which is... I'd like to have a request, and that is that we think about whether masks cause more problems than they solve. They're creating isolation and depression and sickness and fright. And it seems that if we would do a resolution or direct staff to do a resolution, that would be against the real epidemic, which I view as the epidemic of fear. It is out there and is affecting millions of people and causing great damage. I just feel like, you know, we're South Dakota. We've got a wise, brave governor who stayed the course, let wise people make their own decisions. We could use a little vote of support for her as she has let us live good lives with jobs, with schools, with safety, instead of strife and fear. Other states have locked down, done a lot of masks. Didn't seem to matter. They still had spikes in the cases. But we're South Dakota. We'd like to hold our head high if we could. I'd like somebody to make a motion to direct staff to put at least a resolution together for two weeks from now that would say, hey, we have an epidemic of fear going on there. Could we have a motion to try to support the governor and to be supportive against the epidemic of fear?
Thank you, Mr. Bernard. Would anyone else in the audience like to address the commission about an item not on tonight's agenda? There's no movement in the room. And I would assume there's no one on YouTube. Is that correct, Dave?
That is correct. We have no comments on YouTube.
Thank you. We'll move on to the consent item agenda. Number one is setting the date of February 22nd, 2021, at 6:00 PM in this room for our next work session. We anticipate we'll have Bill Efting, the consultant we've hired to help us with the marijuana issue. Number two is establish February 22nd, 2021, as the date for the public hearing on the request for a special malt beverage on sale retailer's license for August 20th through 21st from the Yankton Rodeo Association. And this would be for the rodeo grounds at 404 Paddle Wheel Drive. What is your pleasure?
Benson, so moved.
Second, Moser.
We've got a motion and a second. Is there any commission discussion on this item? Would anyone in the audience like to address the commission on this item? Dave, any comments on YouTube?
No comments on YouTube.
Al, roll call, please.
And this is roll call on consent item 2-2. Minor?
Minor, aye.
Minor's aye. Moser?
Moser, aye.
Moser's aye. Shram?
Shram, aye.
Shram is aye. Weber?
Weber is aye.
Weber is aye. Benson?
Benson, aye.
Benson's aye. Brunick?
Brunick, aye.
Brunick's aye. Sarda?
Sarda, aye.
Sarda's aye. Mybaum?
Mybaum is aye.
Mybaum is aye. Mayor Johnson?
Johnson, aye.
Mayor Johnson is aye. Consent item 2-2 passes 9-0.
Number three under the consent items is consideration of memorandum 21-24 recommending approval of the application from Market at the Meridian for a transient merchant license from May 1st to October 31st, 2021. What is your pleasure?
Brunick, so moved.
Weber, second.
We've got a motion and a second. Any commission discussion on this item? Would anyone in the audience like to address the commission on this item? Dave, anyone on YouTube?
We have no comments on YouTube.
Thank you. Al, roll call, please.
And this is roll call on consent item 2-3. Moser?
Moser, aye.
Moser's aye. Shram?
Shram, aye.
Shram is aye. Weber?
Weber is aye.
Weber is aye. Benson?
Benson, aye.
Benson is aye. Brunick?
Brunick, aye.
Brunick is aye. Sarda?
Sarda, aye.
Sarda's aye. Mybaum?
Mybaum is aye.
Mybaum is aye. Minor?
Minor, aye.
Minor is aye. Mayor Johnson?
Johnson, aye.
Mayor Johnson is aye. Roll call on 2-3 passes 9-0.
Number four under consent items is establishing February 22nd, 2021, as the date for the public hearing on the request for a special events on sale liquor license for February 27th from Flussworks LLC, doing business with the Landing and Big River Burrito Company. This is at 100 Douglas. What is your pleasure?
Weber moves. Minor, seconds.
We've got a motion and a second. Any commission discussion on this item? Would anyone in the audience like to address the commission on this item? Dave, anyone on YouTube?
No comments on YouTube.
Al, roll call, please.
And this is roll call on consent item 2-4. Shram?
Shram, aye.
Shram is aye. Weber?
Weber is aye.
Weber is aye. Benson?
Benson, aye.
Benson is aye. Brunick?
Brunick, aye.
Brunick is aye. Sarda?
Sarda, aye.
Sarda's aye. Mybaum?
Mybaum is aye.
Mybaum is aye. Minor?
Minor, aye.
Minor is aye. Moser?
Moser, aye.
Moser is aye. Mayor Johnson?
Johnson, aye.
Mayor Johnson is aye. Consent item 2-4 passes 9-0.
Moving on to old business. Number one is a second reading and public hearing for ordinance number 1045, which is supplement number one to ordinance number 1038, which is the 2021 Annual Appropriation Ordinance. What is your pleasure?
So moved. Moser?
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Any commission discussion on this item? Would anyone in the audience like to address the commission on this item? Dave, any comments on YouTube?
There are no comments on YouTube.
Thank you. Al, roll call, please.
This is roll call on old business item 3-1. Weber?
Weber is aye.
Weber is aye. Benson?
Benson, aye.
Benson is aye. Brunick?
Brunick, aye.
Brunick is aye. Sarda?
Sarda, aye.
Sarda's aye. Mybaum?
Mybaum is aye.
Mybaum is aye. Minor?
Minor, aye.
Minor is aye. Moser?
Moser, aye.
Moser is aye. Shram?
Shram, aye.
Shram is aye. Mayor Johnson?
Johnson, aye.
Mayor Johnson is aye. Old business item 3-1 passes 9-0.
Moving on to new business. Number one is memorandum supporting the first reading of ordinance number 1046, a temporary mask ordinance, and setting February 22nd, 2021, as the second reading and public hearing of said ordinance. Ross, can you explain to the public what's being proposed here?
Sure, Mayor, Commissioners. The ordinance that has been proposed for a first reading this night is very similar to the one that was passed a couple months ago. It is an ordinance requiring the wearing of masks in public places or places open to the public. The form and substance has not changed, with the exception of a new sunset date. So if this ordinance were passed, it would essentially replace the one that had previously been put in place. It would sunset at a later date. The date that has been chosen for this initial draft for the commission to consider casts it out until May 28th. That date was chosen because it is the Friday following the second meeting in May. And May was essentially, by staff, believed to be a realistic timeframe in which we all hope a vaccine will be widely available to the public, with an opportunity for the public to have had a first and hopefully a second dose by that time. We all know there's a lot of variables in that, but that was the thinking that staff used to come up with this draft. I encourage the commission to discuss tonight their preference for a sunset date if there is a will to pass this ordinance so that we can have language that the commission has already discussed for a second reading, if the commission is so inclined to pass it at our next meeting later this month.
Thank you, Ross. Would anyone like to introduce this ordinance?
Sarda introduces it.
Thank you. Now we'll open it up to commission discussion.
This is Commissioner Minor. I think it makes a lot of sense to extend the date to the end of May. We know we've got the vaccines coming. There've been a lot of variables about how quickly it can get here. But that seems like a very reasonable date to consider. We also know we have variants on either side of us, in Minnesota and Wyoming, documented at this point. And so it would seem wise to me to stay the course until we have more widespread vaccination.
Is there any more commission discussion?
This is Commissioner Moser. I don't, I guess I would want it up more for discussion as far as a date to extend this to, if there is interest in extending this. I guess I come from a point, I've been watching what's been going on the last couple months. I walk into several businesses. People that work there are not wearing masks. People that go into those businesses are not wearing masks. I've seen medical professionals out in the community where masks are not required are choosing themselves not to wear them. And that certainly tells me that if this was an exact science, that you would definitely see medical professionals wearing those out in public. I just think we're getting to the point where we're looking at it getting to be nicer out. I know we can't hardly see that this time of the week and with temperatures where they're at. But I do want some debate on if this is to be extended. I think that two more months is extensive. Iowa, just this morning, their governor is removing a statewide mask mandate, and other communities are transitioning more to a back-to-normal plan. And I think this community needs to talk about that as well.
This is Commissioner Benson. I would agree. You know, the community as a whole responded pretty well with the mask mandate. It was a very controversial issue, but we've actually seen people come together. And so I definitely can be in support of a mask mandate, but I think we need to be looking at a shorter timeframe. Something where it's reevaluated every 30 days. Something, you know, May 28th is too far out. The main purpose of why this mask mandate was put into play was to support our healthcare workers. They're in a much better spot right now. Yes, that could change tomorrow, but we can monitor and we can move things forward if we need to at that time. I just would like to consider something in a shorter timeframe.
This is Commissioner Sarda. So, yeah, I go out like everyone else does, try to stay home as much as I can, but you still have to go to the stores to get what you need. I see most people wearing the mask, and the stores I go into, all the employees are wearing them. And I like that we haven't pushed out that far, because it's almost just a little bit past the school end. And if we're asking the students to wear it, I think it's just a small thing to ask our community to also wear it. And I haven't heard any complaints. And I think it's working well. The numbers are down. I think that's a sign that it is working. So I'm okay with having that date where it's proposed.
This is Commissioner Brunick. I'm with David. I feel that the date is sufficient, and the fact that we can pull it off if we so choose. What I worry about is revisiting this every 30 days, and it just becomes, this is the thing that we're just over and over and over. I would like to get through the vaccinations. I know we're not gonna get through everybody, but if we could get through the majority of folks, especially the majority of the more vulnerable population and the school system, and tying it, you know, tying it towards the end of school. I'm hoping, you know, my goal is to have this behind us, I think, as everybody else is. And I would just like to extend it out this time. And then, you know, at the end of it, be able to run naked for a little while without a mask on. I would really like to do that. Thank you.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes?
Mayor Johnson, this is Commissioner Minor. I don't, I watched the Health Board meeting later. Would it be worth it to talk a little bit about how the Health Board came up with that date, or why we're considering that date?
Dr. Milroy, do you want to address that? Dr. Milroy, we can't hear you.
Okay, I was having a little trouble unmuting.
There you go.
I guess the discussions we were doing had to do with when school was out and looking more at, I guess, trying to make the best projections we could as, in terms of likely vaccination of the public and the majority of the vulnerable people in the population. So I guess, I don't know if, and I guess we're certainly looking at school and trying to extend at least until school was out.
Any more discussion?
I think it seems wise, I'm sorry, Mayor, this is Commissioner Weber. It seems wise to follow what the Health Board recommendation would be.
This is Commissioner Mybaum. So one thing I would be curious for us to maybe elaborate a little bit more on and perhaps build some consensus over, because we've heard immunizations get to a certain point, or, you know, get to a certain end of the school year, for instance. There's so many different things that we could point to and achieve, I suppose, and then automatically sunset this ordinance. What concerns me is that we're not building any of these triggers into the ordinance. And I can understand why, I suppose, but I find this too confusing for us to be doing as part of a ordinance that we're going to put into effect again. You know, essentially, the way that I look at it is if we were to replay what we've done before, having enacted an ordinance with very similar language to this, and the reasons that were given for doing so, you look at where we're at now today, and those arguments would be flat, just like the number of COVID patients who are up at Avera. Today's a great day. There are zero COVID patients up at Avera Sacred Heart. And the staff up there have worked very hard, and we all appreciate their service and sacrifice. And that being said, we can also be really excited that all of the frontline staff, all of the frontline staff at our healthcare facilities here in Yankton County, at our long-term care facilities, the long-term care residents, they've all received two doses of the vaccines that have been typed. So 100% coverage for those folks. And then on top of that, we've been moving down the chart of eligible recipients of these vaccines, and we're making incredible progress. Here in Yankton County, we lead the entire state, where 16% of the eligible population who can get a vaccine has received a vaccine here in Yankton County. And that's another incredible achievement. So we're achieving all these great things, and certainly I can understand, well, let's keep that going. But when you look at the numbers, the closest comparison would be July, August of last year. And the numbers that I would be comparing them to would be the RT-PCR test positivity rates, the number of positive cases on a weekly basis. You compare this week to, say, August 15th, and work your way back. I wouldn't want the impression to be to our citizens that we expect us to be going through another August, September, October, like we experienced last year, leading up to a surge, simply because the numbers wouldn't support that. What seems more sensible, if you have any experience with epidemiological curves, is that we're at the point now where we're going to continue to see regression in these numbers. And I would tell you, I just can't imagine over the next couple of months, things getting much worse, because we're really good right now. Certainly, there'll be more cases, but when the state of South Dakota's Department of Health ranks our community as moderate spread, when they tell us in very public, in graphic disclosures on their website, regularly updated every day now, earlier and earlier, as far as hospital capacity, active cases, test positivity rates, there's so many things that we could point to to give our citizens some assurances that when we're putting something like this, which is being described as a temporary ordinance into law, that we're also assuring them that it will come off of the books if we achieve whatever we describe the achievement as needing to be, I suppose. I may be of the opinion that we achieved it weeks ago, and wish that this commission had removed it off the books weeks ago as well. But that wasn't my expectation. We had a public comment earlier this morning from Kurt Bernard talking about a resolution. When we think about the resolution that remains in effect, that goes back to April of last year and has not been updated since then, we don't give any guidance to our citizens over the importance of getting vaccinated, for instance. We don't say anything about the efficacy of these vaccines. It could be important for us to put a resolution together or put in language, perhaps even in an ordinance, albeit a temporary ordinance, or maybe in a resolution that's longstanding, that reminds folks that we're still in a pandemic. Get out and get vaccinated if you're eligible to. We could be so far ahead of the rest of the nation just by continuing to see what we've been seeing for the last several weeks, and what we already know is that we're going to continue to see ramps in production and distribution of vaccines. If you're saying you want to see widespread vaccination here in Yankton, we should legitimately be ready for the fact that 100% of folks in our county who are eligible for vaccines, who have comorbidities, who are over the age of 65, will be 100% vaccinated by March. And I don't just throw that out there. I'm just looking at how quickly we are vaccinating the folks who say yes to being vaccinated here in the county. And these are numbers that the Department of Health puts out there. So I don't want to take up any more time, but I know there's others who may have more to share. So certainly, there's a lot to celebrate, but at the same time, I think there's more that we should agree on as far as language that would either go into this ordinance or perhaps in a resolution, so that we can provide more surety and demonstrate the stability that we can provide to our citizens through this.
Commissioner My, this is Commissioner Moser. Commissioner Mybaum brings up a good point, and a clarification question that I think would help me. We've talked a lot about having to rely on the science and the data. What science and data told the health commission that we needed to extend this? What data was analyzed, and what did you use to make the decision to extend the ordinance?
Dr. Milroy, do you want to take that, or do you want me to take a stab at?
Okay, I'll begin. I think what we did was we were looking at, you know, we would hate to have the current ordinance sort of a victim of its own success. I think that what we've been doing has really been very successful, and we've been, I think, all of us, very pleased to see the numbers in Yankton go down. And I think that what we were afraid of was that the premature easing of kind of these good preventative measures could potentially bring us back to a second surge. There's certainly, if you read different national, I guess, national experts, they have certainly supported ongoing measures at this time. And I know when the mask mandate was proposed in the South Dakota Senate, every single healthcare organization in the state supported it. If you looked at Avera and Sanford Monument, you looked at the South Dakota Medical Association, the Nursing Association, they all came out and supported mask mandate, because I think what they said is, what we're doing is working, so let's not drop the ball prematurely. And so I think what we said is, you know, we're doing well. I think we're all overjoyed that our numbers are down. The hospital, we're giving some of our healthcare workers a little breather here. But certainly, there are a number of places that are seeing new surges, new waves. And so I think our fear was, we don't want to see that happen. We're on a good path right now, and we wanted to continue. I think we've all been extremely happy. The school has had a mask mandate and has been probably the most successful in the state of South Dakota at staying open and keeping kids in school. And so, and I know the school board had come out and strongly endorsed having a mask mandate in Yankton. And so I think that we're on a good path. I think our vaccinations are going out very well. I mean, I think Avera in our county is doing extremely, an extremely good job with that. And so I think what we were saying as far as May was, we want to make sure school is out, and we don't want to be back every two weeks or every four weeks back at city commission, taking your time and bringing this up over and over. I think your point about adding some language in encouraging vaccination is a good addition to it, too. But I guess we thought that it was a premature time when we're on a good path to change course right now and maybe give a signal to the public that, okay, hey, maybe we're out of the woods. Everything could be okay, when I think we're so close that we didn't want to drop the ball too early.
One thing I'd be curious to hear some clarification over, Mr. Mayor, and maybe this is something that Dr. Milroy could speak to, and that is the, essentially, the confusion still in here over what that end date was going to be. You know, granted, it did end up failing, and I'm speaking about the statewide mandate bill. But as it was originally written up, as I understand it, again, from the press conference, was at the end of September, it was set to expire, and then it had been reconciled to the end of April. And I'm not sure which version or which end date the healthcare professionals or the healthcare associations were supporting. You know, again, I highly doubt you're going to find any single commissioner here who is anti-mask, but especially when it comes to the language in these mandates and in trying to understand something which you could perceive as simple as an end date, I can understand why there's even confusion at the state level and certainly at the national level, too. But I'd be curious to know which end date they were actually supporting in the end, or if there was even any consensus there.
I don't know.
I guess, Nathan, I don't know either on that one, what the final date was on that, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I don't have an answer to that either. I will, I'm on the health board as well, as the commission and the public probably knows. And I really boiled the data down differently in my head, and this is just the way my brain was working. So what I observed last time occurred is people had a lot of different kinds of data, and I wasn't really sure what the benchmarks were. And so there was folks that had data to support what their line of thinking was, and I guess that's how it works. And I felt like people made decisions based on the data that they supported. So I thought about, you know, we could bring case numbers or trends. We all know what those are. We could also bring information from other states that don't have the mandates that are doing as well, or cities that don't have mandates that are doing as well or better than we are. So I kind of just looked at our own organization and my world, because I can understand that, and I can explain that. Some of the data, to me, honestly, not being part of the medical profession is overwhelming and difficult for me to understand. So, you know, the way I look at it from our organization, about a third of the people in our organization have had COVID-19. And I know that because they report when they have had that, when they get that diagnosis, or we've tested folks, and then we get the test results, and we go through our process of keeping them home and checking on them, et cetera, et cetera, before they can come back to work safely. So that's about a third of us. About a third of our folks have been vaccinated. And just amen for that. Our law enforcement folks, fire professionals, dispatch, and many have gone through now their second course of vaccine. It's been long enough, and I just so grateful for that. It's unbelievable how grateful we are that some of our folks who are at the frontlines every day have been able to have that protection. And then there's about another third of us who have not had COVID-19. Some of us have had to be isolated because we've had an exposure. Some of us have gone through testing. Some of us have stayed home because we felt like we may have had symptoms. So we're still out there trying to do the best we can, doing the business of the city. And my understanding is that the masks are not just about the data, but they're also about, you know, giving folks the good understanding of protection, because there is some science behind that. And we can debate, you know, the different types of masks or the efficacy of that protection, but there's at least some. I think no one's agreed that there's absolutely no protection whatsoever from wearing a face covering. So, you know, to me, I don't know the right date, and if you all want to change that date, Ross and I would love to know that this evening, so that we don't have to go schedule another special meeting, but we'll do that if you want, because if we make any significant change to the ordinance, we need to know, we need to have two readings. So the date is up to you all, and maybe the May 28th is too far out. We're looking at May through December for general population vaccination. So we felt going, you know, about the 90-day benchmark was fair, and if the commission wanted to rescind it before then. If there's another resolution, the commission would like to see, or a resolution in lieu of that ordinance, where staff is happy to put that together. I didn't know until today that that was perhaps something that was being talked about. So we're happy to do that and take that direction as well. We'll support what, you know, we'll support what we need to. I think, you know, we do see people's minds shifting and thinking, and wheels turning now, especially that some are vaccinated. What's that going to look like? Thinking we're going to have some months coming ahead where we're going to be a little bit in flux. And that's all just part of this new era we're in of COVID-19, and not exactly knowing exactly where we're going at each turn. But whatever you guys choose to do this evening, we'll happily do. What I would recommend is we don't have an ordinance running through a reading process at the same time we have a resolution to confuse it further, but just like a clear dissemination of the two. So that was how I, that was the data that I used. It's a pool of about 129 to 140 people, and I thought we were pretty good reflection of the rest of the community.
I'll just add, the CDC has not changed its recommendations for community-wide masking and how that can be a very important tool towards mitigation. Getting into this discussion of whether we move forward with an ordinance or we switch to a resolution, I think what we, this ordinance we have is pretty clear, and people are smart enough now. They've decided whether they're going to follow the ordinance or not. We all know that people are making that decision themselves. And so I don't really see the value in switching it up for, because at the end of the day, we're probably among the few that are going to understand the difference between a resolution and an ordinance at this point in the stream, you know. So to switch now, I don't, I think it's just confusing to people, and I would rather we stick with an ordinance that people understand, they know what it means, they decide for themselves if they want to follow it. This is a way for us to say, as a city, we recognize the importance of masking at this point. There's no magical time when we can say that it's not going to be needed. You know, I think the CDC would be a big indicator if they all of a sudden said, hey, there's no need for masking anymore. That's, to me, then, discussion's over. And maybe South Dakota will be ahead of the rest of the country, and we can feel comfortable lifting the ordinance at the end of April or May. I don't think any of us on the health board want this to go on any longer than it needs to. Like, as for everyone sitting here, this has been a very emotional and frustrating conversation. We're all just trying to do the right thing. And so I think, based on what we know now, the end of May seems like a reasonable timeframe. If we feel that changes, the commission can come forward anytime and rescind the ordinance. That's where I stand. Is there any further discussion, any motions?
This is Commissioner Mybaum. I would want to still maybe just give one example, perhaps with the help of Dr. Milroy. And if anyone here is well aware of the awesome work that the folks out at the center have been doing for months now, serving meals to thousands of folks in need, especially with so many folks who have genuine concern about being out because of health situations that they're going through, for instance. But what the folks at the center have been stating, and you can see it in their newsletter, you see it on their website, and it is a benchmark that they've had in mind. When it comes to community spread, before they were to open their doors, one of the metrics that they've been waiting for, patiently waiting for, would be based on the positivity rate of the testing that's going on here in Yankton County. And the percent that they've been channeling for a while has been, let's get this community to under 5% before we would consider opening our doors, before folks like, you know, Dr. Milroy, who would advise the board, for instance, as to whether or not they could open their doors while maintaining safe guidelines, while maintaining masking, while maintaining common sense health and safety protocols. All of that is what has, what has, I think, made it sensible for them to have a benchmark that they can achieve while still maintaining safe distance when folks come in, et cetera, et cetera. So last week, when we see here in Yankton County, we're below 5%, this week, we're actually just above 1%, I mean, those are good metrics. You know, are you getting closer to the point where now it's like, well, you know, we set this benchmark? You know, what else should we be considering now that we weren't considering before? You know, who knows what's all going to be talked about at the board meeting, for instance? But, you know... But, you know, if I were in there, I would give them the thumbs up. That's not my position. But, but the board helped to set a metric that they thought was relevant before they would take the next actionable step of essentially saying our doors are open. There might be limited capacity, et cetera. But I'd appreciate it maybe if Dr. Milroy could maybe give us a little bit of insight into the thought process that went into setting a benchmark for that organization. And perhaps there's something that we could incorporate into our discussion.
Yeah. I would say too, that I have a communication from Kristi at the center and to, you know, say hats off to them. During the pandemic, they have served 35,253 meals, and this is a couple days old, to 9,537 people. So again, I, I have to commend them for the outstanding job that they have done. And I believe at their meeting on February 17th, they will be taking up the discussion of doing a soft opening perhaps as early as March, based on the fact that our numbers have been under 5%. And I think that's very encouraging. They serve a vulnerable population. And I guess that number was felt to be a number that with mandatory masking and social distancing and hygiene, that they could do a soft opening and start to serve in more of an in-person, which I think, you know, they're balancing safety with certainly the emotional needs of some of the seniors that get a lot of benefit from the center. So I think that that 5% was felt to be a number where it would be safe and yet not so strict that there would, I mean, there would be no tie, that it would allow some flexibility to open if safety measures were carefully followed to allow some of the seniors to start getting together again. I think it'll be a soft opening. It won't be everything all at once. And we will just have to do kind of a dial forward, dial, dial back. I think it's well understood it'd be dial forward, dial back. You know, if the numbers start looking worse or we start having problems, it's definitely dialing back. But I think that that 5% was chosen to be maybe a little flexible and yet maintain careful safety in seniors.
So one example that I might throw out then, Mr. Mayor, with perhaps a resolution in mind, and that would be this. Here tonight, we've introduced a ordinance that will require a second reading, where a resolution could be beneficial, is the resolution could be based on metrics that would essentially parrot what the center has used, 5% being that benchmark, for instance. The second reading can happen if we wanted to do it in March, if we wanted to do it in April. But the resolution would set the stage. The resolution could state outright, if Yankton County exceeds 5% for two weeks in a row, it would trigger that second reading. We would essentially then have the mandate, the temporary toothless mask mandate discussion again at the next meeting, whether we would call a special meeting or at the next regular meeting. But we could also wait and hear what the board at the center is going to do. Because like Dr. Milroy mentioned, the folks who typically frequent the center are adults and, you know, part of the luckier generation. But, but I think that does say something. And regardless of whether they do decide to open their doors or not, that's, that's their decision to make. But I do have to wonder if our actions here tonight might help assist them in perhaps a level of confidence that they might be doing the right thing.
If I could make one comment, at 5%, they weren't doing away with their masks. They are still absolutely, they're just barely deciding it's okay to open the doors. But they are absolutely mandating masks, distance, and hygiene. So I think we're talking about slightly different issues too.
This is Commissioner Minor, and I would just like to urge patients, I would like for us as commissioners to consider patients. And I think we need to encourage patients with the community. There are still so many variables. I would hate for us to say, oh gosh, this is going to sunset on March 30th and we don't have enough vaccine available between now and then, and there's a variant strain. I would rather have us set the May deadline and be able to let up earlier on it. We're all over masks. Everybody is over masks. We are all, it's, and that, we have to be aware of that urge to do, as Commissioner Brunnick said, to let our faces be free and run through a meadow. We all are dying for that. But it's still here. And the metrics, the 5% metrics, we have to remember that, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Milroy, but there's a lag in the way the statistics are reported, right? We learn what's happening about two weeks ago. So if a surge were to begin, we could very quickly be behind a surge. And there's a variant strain that is present in Minnesota and Wyoming, the B117. Is that correct?
Correct. And it's quite rampant in Florida and it seems that it spreads much more quickly. And so I think there, it's just another unknown. We just don't know. So.
I would just encourage.
Even the people who have had the disease, they're still so, I mean, you know, I think there's so much controversy about how long their immunity even lasts, that we're assuming everyone who had it is just 100%. And I don't think that's true. I, I don't know the answer. I, when I do reading, I don't think anyone knows. People think it might be six months, might be eight months. Some people say three months. Some people say if you have an asymptomatic or mild case, maybe you don't have the same, but you should still get vaccinated. So I don't think we can lump people who had it as safe. We still need to keep our guard up until we can get everyone, everyone vaccinated would be great. And then we're all going to probably do a mask burning ceremony, I suppose. But anyway, but I, I just think that we just need to be safe and, and not end up behind the curve.
Exactly. And I'm, I have a niece that's attending school, living in Ireland, and so I pay special attention to that UK variant, B117. And I know that that particular variant has caused all kinds of discussion at various levels of government about how to manage the vaccine. There's been discussion about not worrying about the second dose and getting everybody a first dose. There's been discussion about can you mix the Moderna with the Pfizer? We haven't gotten, it, it, that is not, I think those discussions have started at a much higher level. I just think there are so many variables between now and the end of the year. What we're doing is working. I would urge us to be patient and, and stick with it.
This is Commissioner Benson. You know, I do think there's a lot of comfort in the masking right now. And I, I, like I said, I think the community has supported it well and people have come together who maybe have even been against it at times. But if we're going to take an approach like this, I'd like us to take a more active approach, where we're evaluating it more often. It doesn't have to be 30 days, but at least maybe by April 30th. I think when we extend it out to that May 28th date, it's us taking more of a passive approach to just say, that's what it's going to be unless we decide to reevaluate it, versus us taking the active approach of reevaluating it and trying to make the right decision for the community based on the numbers at that time. So I just would like to see us take a more active approach and bring the date forward to, you know, whether it's April 30th. I'm not sure what the perfect date is, but I'd like to see a more active approach taken.
I agree. This is Commissioner Moser. I agree with Commissioner Benson. I, I think you're right. I think continued discussions are better than we can put it on a shelf and just leave it alone until the end of May. Again, you're looking at the end of May, it's getting nice out. People are going to be outside, sporting events are happening. And, you know, I, I just think that I would rather, hey, we're in this for the long haul no matter what. I would rather do the work and continuing to have discussions on if we need to extend it than to just put it out there and just leave it alone until that date comes up. So I'd rather do the opposite, and that is the continued discussions. That's what we're elected to have. So I, I think it needs to be more proactive.
This is Commissioner Brunnick. I agree that, that the discussions are, it's what we're here for. I just think that going to May 28th, if, if, if there are enough people on the commission that feel that we need to do that earlier, then we still have that option. But we also have till May 28th. You know, it's, it's, it's not that we can't, we can't pull it off. We, we have that option while having it go out there also. I just want to, you know, it's, it, this isn't saying that it absolutely has to go till that point. We do have the option to be able to pull it off at an earlier date and that'd be wonderful. Would love to do that. If, if it, if it proves to be the right decision.
Commissioner Minor here. Sorry, one more thing. Just to respond to both Commissioner Benson and Moser. If we put the date at the end of May, what if we had monthly health board meetings and had ongoing discussion about the progress of vaccination so that we have some facts and science to base that discussion on? So that we know, there's just too many unknowns right at this moment. We could say May is our end target right now. My concern would be for all of us in that second April meeting, having to try to convince the public, like you said, the weather's going to be nice, everybody's over masks, but what if we're behind on vaccinations at that point? And what if the variant strain has emerged? How do we convince people to continue to wear the masks? If, we'll just go through the fight again. I would prefer for us to set that May date. I absolutely agree we should keep discussing it, but maybe we should do some sort of monthly health board meeting that updates the commission on vaccine progress.
Yeah, I like that. Any others, Commissioner Sarda? You know, meet, if it's monthly, bi-weekly, whatever it is, just bring the data forward, whether it be in the CIM, and just present it and if the commissioners feel that the trend is going down and the results are all there, then we bring it forward again.
Is there any more discussion?
This is Commissioner Mybaum. One other metric that we could also consider, because, you know, I'm hearing more and more about vaccinations, which are great, but it's also publicly available information if we would want to tie the extent of, of our action to the completion of, let's say, you know, Group 1D, for instance. That's, that right there, it's a, it's a sizable group, but should Yankton County achieve vaccinations of, of all of Group 1D, then we would take the next step, which might be the sunsetting of an ordinance. The revision of an ongoing resolution. It's pretty straightforward. You might get a little lost in the weeds if you're talking about wanting to get 30% of your population vaccinated, 60% of your population vaccinated. We may never get to 70% simply because we give folks that choice. We know that in even the healthcare facilities. Workers there are given that option. And, and I think that's fair. And certainly several of the, several of, of the folks that we may, we may know have already contracted it and they have the antibodies and they know they got it in September and they're willing to wait until July to get a vaccine, for instance. They're, they're, they're passing it on to somebody else who they think may need the vaccine. And that's their prerogative, I suppose. But again, it's, it's a metric that we could point to. And the one that I would suggest is what we're hearing a lot about now, and that's the Group 1D. It's a sizable group, but once it's, once, once our vaccinated administrators state outright that Group 1D has achieved vaccination to whomever is eligible and has said yes, we could sunset an ordinance or a resolution.
Am I correct, Commissioner Mybaum? Is Group 1D still teachers and 65 and older? Is that how you, is that 1D? So then there's still no general population vaccination?
Yes. May I make a comment? 1D, the first section of 1D that opened was those over 80. As of last Monday, the second tier of 1D opened, which was over 75, when the next one will be those over 65. And the last, the fourth tier of the 1D will be people of, I think, 16 or 18 up to 64 that have two or more chronic medical conditions. So there's actually four tiers to 1D to the, and they're on the second tier as of about a week ago.
And the one other group that I would mention too, and that's the high-risk population in the congregate settings. So the, whether it's the work center, you know, the prison facilities, the folks who are incarcerated, who are in that group, would also be included in that too.
This is Commissioner Sharam. I think it does make sense to add some sort of sunset akin to what Commissioner Mybaum was talking about, because if we wait to adjust our philosophy from what the CDC recommends, the CDC is looking at it from a national point of view. And we are very different here in Yankton, South Dakota, than say a big urban setting. So having some sort of agreed-upon metric would make sense in my mind to be a good policy versus just blanket policy that we're not really sure when it can actually sunset.
So do we want to decide on the specific metric or do we want to take advice from the city health board?
This is Commissioner Sarda. I think we want to take the advice of the health board on it, which what the good matrix would be to follow and have them consensus and then bring it forward. Versus us, the Rock, going to have different opinions, right? So I'd leave it to the health experts. I'm not a health expert.
This is Commissioner Brunnick. I'd like to echo, echo that. I'd like to, you know, show my ignorance. 1D, I didn't know what, who everyone was that was in 1D. So I think it would be, it would be in the best interest to listen to the health board other than me trying to make this decision when I don't necessarily know the ins and outs of everything. I agree with the, the health board idea.
Sounds like we have some consensus to have the health board look at what metrics we should evaluate in considering the end of the ordinance. Any more discussion at this time?
Mayor, just can I get some clarification? So you're, you're looking for that before a second reading or you want to go ahead with the second reading as written, but have the health board establish some, some metrics for the commission that you, you'll pass? Or how, I just want to make sure I'm doing as you ask.
That's my understanding. The question will be, once the health board comes up with those metrics, will there be buy-in from the commission? Which I would say there's no guarantee of that.
Okay. Can I make a comment? Thanks for your support.
I liked the idea of the health board continuing to meet on a regular basis. And at your meetings, I think that we could, you know, just give an update when at your meetings, I think that we could, you know, just give an update when you meet. And because there's a number of variables, it's hard to just pin one number down. I think that'll be quite a tough task for us to do. But I am completely okay with us meeting. You meet every two weeks. If we met at least every two weeks before one of your meetings, took a good look at what the numbers were doing in the city, in the county, what everything looked at, like at the hospital, how our vaccinations were doing, and just did an update report to you, and then have the, I don't know if there's a magic number, but at some point, you could say, hey, everything looks great. Let's go ahead and let it sunset right now. Let's rescind it.
This is Commissioner Brunick again. With the way that it's written right now, we could rescind it at any point. So if all of a sudden the health board was saying that it could be rescinded, then we could rescind it. It wouldn't necessarily have to be in the ordinance. Would that be right? Amy?
Yeah, I think you can rescind it, Ross, via a resolution prior to. So that could be a special meeting or a regular meeting. And I'm happy with the help of Dr. Milroy and, you know, our local medical professionals to develop some local metrics that are county or more Yankton-based. Just reminder that, you know, none of us, apart from Dr. Milroy on the health board, have, I don't think, formal medical training, but we're certainly happy to put together a, you know, vaccination metric and a case percent positivity metric, if that will be helpful. And let the commission know where we are with that metric that's set, and then up to the nine commissioners as to, you know, how much efficacy you want to give to that We're happy to do that on the health board, and we can come up with some maybe case numbers and percent of folks vaccinated. I'm not quite sure how we'll determine how many in each group. I suppose we have some population information, and we can take a percentage based on population of how many in D, for example, but we wouldn't know how many 18- to 64-year-olds have two core morbidities. But we'll do our level best to have something tangible for the commission to decide if they want to hold their decision-making, too.
Commissioner Minor, I think that's a really wise course of action. We're going into a period of time where there's lots of potential for change very quickly, both in the positive direction and in the negative direction. And so the idea of getting numbers from the health board, if it's possible to get a quick update at every meeting, and then take that into consideration, then that discussion is ongoing between now and whenever we can finally sunset the masks.
This is Commissioner Maybaum. One day that I would impress upon the health board is Mondays, simply because that is the day that the positivity rate is set for the week prior, basically, because the numbers are aggregated between Mondays and Sundays. So essentially, yesterday's numbers then provide us with our metric come today. And so because there's no need for calls with healthcare providers, because the numbers are so far down, previously, the numbers provided by the South Dakota Department of Health didn't come through until closer to noon, but now they're usually up by 11, between 11 and 11:30 a.m. And so just food for thought, if the health board wants to have as much relevant data as possible before calling any meeting, it would probably be best to have it after the noon hour on a Monday, so that you have the most recent data available to you.
Thank you, everyone, for that robust discussion. I think it's important to remember what Commissioner Minor talked about earlier. That is patience. We've shown a lot of patience with each other tonight as we try to figure out where we're all at and try to do what's best for the community. And we know at the end of the day, that is the goal of every one of us sitting here or on that screen. So thank you. A reminder to the public that the public hearing on this proposed ordinance will be February 22nd. Our meetings start at 7:00 p.m. So you're welcome to attended person, or you can email feedback to commission@cityofyankton.org, or you can send written letters to the Yankton City Commission at Yankton City Hall, P.O. Box 176. And we ask that if you are submitting it via written word, that you do so by 3:00 p.m. Tuesday, February 16th. So moving on, we do have some other things on the agenda for this evening. Number two is introduction and first reading of ordinance number 1047, which establishes February 22nd as the date for the second reading and public hearing regarding the removal of restrictions on the sale of alcohol on Christmas Day in the city of Yankton. What is your pleasure?
Shram introduced.
And Ross, maybe for the public, you can explain what we're proposing here. I mean, it's pretty obvious, but people might be curious about it.
Talk about the...
Yep, sorry. This is the removal of the restriction of sale of alcohol on Christmas Day, which I believe is the last day we have that's restricted.
Under state statute...
Thank you. Commissioners, thank you. Under state statute, the municipality has the power to restrict alcohol sales on Christmas Day and Memorial Day, and that has been a longstanding power of municipalities. However, the city, for a number of years now, has been getting requests from retailers to allow the sale of alcohol on Christmas Day. We do not regulate and restrict alcohol sales on Memorial Day. At the request of a number of these local retailers, we have presented to you a draft ordinance that does remove the restriction of alcohol sales on Christmas Day. It's entirely up to you whether you wish to end that restriction. We would not be changing the alcohol sale timeframe. Alcohol sales would still be banned after 2:00 a.m.
Thank you, Ross. Any further commission discussion on this item before we move on? Okay. Number three, under new businesses, consideration of memorandum 21-23 and resolution 21-08 regarding acquisition of property at 713 Broadway. What is your pleasure?
Shram, some move.
Benson, second.
We have a motion and a second. Amy or Dave, do you want to explain to the public what is being proposed here?
Sure. Dave and I both can talk about it if you'd like. Honorable mayor, members of the commission, I think you're all familiar with the property we're talking about there on the corner of 8th and Broadway, what I would say is, you know, across 8th Street from John's service. That property in itself doesn't have immediate use for us as a city. We would maintain that as green space if the commission would like to purchase it, maybe with the potential of one day combining it with something else, or, you know, when, in the future, if something else happens on that corner. I did talk with you, send out some information to you, and asked for individual responses, and I've had some conversations with you as individuals, either over email or verbally. And there's some of you who thought, you know, yeah, that has some merit at that price. We should purchase it. There was a couple who said, eh, give or take, not so interested. Some didn't, I didn't have that conversation with. So there's probably a lot of different opinions here. Staff isn't adamant either way about the purchase of the property. However, just think that, you know, right now, the private interest would require zone change. Dave can talk a little bit more about that, and that isn't something we would probably recommend. Of course, we'd go through the planning commission, but that isn't something we would recommend just due to the size of that lot and what's happening there. So I think it would be more of a future, it would be a possession, if you were to acquire it, more for something long-term in the future, long, long-term in the future, and not immediate use. And if the commission would like to see it on the private market, that's okay, too. So Dave, do you want to add any more detail about the zoning?
Sure. From a zoning perspective, I think in the memo, it's pretty clear. I make some points about if you were to rezone that one lot, it would almost be a textbook version of what would be considered a spot zone, and that's kind of a term that we use when a single parcel is considered for rezoning. That would definitely have, you know, some negative impacts on surrounding property uses that are already there. So the only reason, the only way of rezoning would really make sense is if it was a large enough parcel that you could create some buffer around it from the residential occupancies to the south and west, and it's such a small lot, there's really not much of an opportunity for that. The other thing that really needs to be considered here is access management issues. It's in the middle of a turning lane off A Street, which means that we would definitely want to restrict access to it as much as we could off A Street, so it really only has alley access. As City Manager Leon said, staff doesn't have a real strong opinion one way or another, and, you know, it is possible for a single-family home to be there with access off the alley, but obviously, when you drive by it, you realize it's not a very marketable location, and it's an undersized lot based on all of our ordinance standards, anyway. So, you know, it would just be a really tough position on the private marketplace, but access management issues, in addition to the zoning fairness issues, would be two things to think about. I could try and answer any other questions you might have.
Thank you, Amy and Dave. Any commission discussion on this item?
Yes, Commissioner Sarda, you know, I just look at that. Seems like the city purchases a property that we could use. It's adjacent to a trail or something. This one's kind of just in the area that would be hard to do much with, and I don't know what the benefit would be of the city owning it, I guess. We'd have to maintain it, and right now, someone else is maintaining it, and I'd just soon leave it in the private sector.
Commissioner Shram, I actually would prefer if the city did own this property. The chance, off chance, that somebody would put a residential property there, I think, would detract from the surrounding aesthetics, and I think there's a future chance that as properties on Broadway adjacent become older and less valuable, that there's a development chance for somebody to come in and buy up several of those properties and then potentially rezone to have something more commercially designed on Broadway, which I think is, in my opinion, the better use of Broadway access or front edges, commercial property. So I think the city should buy it. It's going to take some maintenance, yes, but it's not a very big lot. It shouldn't take too long to mow and maintain, and then just going forward, it gives some flexibility for future development in that area.
This is Commissioner Maybaum. I would echo everything said by Commissioner Shram, and knowing what the property was listed for and what the city would be able to acquire it for, it gets into that territory of, you know, what I would refer to as mice nuts. It's a pretty small price to pay to have a pretty sizable say in what may eventually be developed there, and I don't think you can go wrong at that price. And I'm also interested to see if that location could be a good location for the city, at least in the interim, perhaps, to use as a way to maybe market via a billboard, nothing huge, but to just leverage that location as a way to maybe create some awareness over events that are going on in Yankton, or, you know, things of that nature. So again, the price seems right to me, and the potential, you know, this would be a long-term kind of investment, but small price to pay to have a pretty sizable say in what would eventually be developed there.
I don't know if this was mentioned, but the proposed price is $23,500.
Could, with the sign, could we hear if that is something that's possible on that location? I don't know, you know, with our sign ordinance and that type of thing.
Dave, do you want to speak to the restrictions of the sign ordinance? Thank you.
Yeah. So it's zoned residential, so a billboard or off-premise sign would not be permitted in that location. If we wanted to do something like that more for community events, we do have some properties down on 4th and Broadway that would be in the correct zoning for that sort of occupancy. That's one of the, that discussion item there is, one of the things that's been proposed by the private sector is, hey, can we put a big changeable copy or electronic sign on that location? And in that residential zoning district, that would not be a permitted use.
Campaign signs would be good, though, right, Dave?
There are provisions for election signs based on size that are allowed in residential districts.
Any more commission discussion?
I've got one more quick thing. This is Commissioner Brunick. So right now, the only thing that could go into that location is a residence. Is that correct? So if it's only a residence, so as the city, we're kind of restricting the property. It's going to be a residence on 8th and Broadway at the stoplight there, or it's not, it can't be a business, so we're kind of restricting that piece. Is that correct?
So it's zoned R4 multiple-family residential, which is the same thing the rest of that block is zoned as. So that is very, that is very true. Those statements are correct. The zoning permitted, principal permitted uses in an R4 district do not include any commercial occupancies. So it could have potentially a duplex on it, but most likely, based on how small it is, it's already undersized. It would be a single-family residence with access off the alley. And the entire block, like I said, is zoned residential, so that's part of the protection for the surrounding properties is to not have a one-off of something on a corner or in the middle of a block like that.
Has that property been eaten into via the right-hand turning lane there on the corner?
So it has not. The city always had a wider right-of-way at that location, and A Street improvements were improved within that wider right-of-way. If you look up the corridor to the west, it's pretty clear to see that that right-of-way has been oversized for decades.
Which, hence the narrow lot.
Yeah. Part of the narrow lot also has to do with just the time, point in history that the lot was platted. That was, lot sizes were much smaller traditionally in the downtown area, where a majority of the lots are undersized, less than 50 feet wide. It's very common in the southern 4th of the community.
Any more commission discussion? All right. Would anyone in the audience like to address the commission on this item? Would anyone in the audience like to address the commission on this item? No movement here in the audience. Dave, any comments on YouTube?
There are no YouTube comments on this item.
All right. Al, roll call, please.
Nathan, can I say one thing?
Sure, Mason.
Apologize. I appreciate Dave, or Commissioner Sarda's comments about it's been well-maintained by somebody else already. There's no guarantee that the private sector will maintain that lot going forward if it does sell. Then we run into tall grass, weeds. It's a prime location for people coming into town from the lake area. I would just hate to see that it doesn't get maintained and then we'd end up having to find them and blow it. And so I still think it's better used to be in the city's hands.
Thank you. Al, roll call, please.
And this is roll call on new business item 4-3. Benson.
No.
Brunick.
Brunick, aye.
Sarda? I'm sorry. I should repeat these. Benson is an A. Brunick is an I. Sarda?
Sarda, no.
Sarda's an A. Mybaum?
Mybaum is aye.
Mybaum is aye. Minor?
Minor is aye.
Minor is aye. Mojer?
Mojer, aye.
Mojer's aye. Schramm?
Schramm, aye.
Schramm is aye. Weber?
Weber is no.
Weber is an A. Mayor Johnson?
Johnson, aye.
Mayor Johnson is aye. Old Business Item 4-3 passes 6-3.
Al, because that's a purchase of a property, do we need, is that enough vote?
Correct. Purchase of property, as pointed out in the memo by Dave, has to be a 2/3 vote of the commission. And 6 to 3 is how this turned out, so that's 2/3 for.
Thank you.
Number four, under new business is consideration of memorandum 21-22 and resolution 21-07 regarding a mower purchase for the Parks Department. And after a trade-in, the cost of that mower will be $56,464. What is your pleasure?
Benson, some move.
Second, Mojer.
We've got a motion and a second. Any commission discussion on this item? Would anyone in the audience like to address the commission on this item? Dave, any comments on YouTube?
No comments on this item.
Thank you. Al, roll call, please.
And this is roll call on new business item 4-4. Brunick?
Brunick, aye.
Brunick is aye. Sarda?
Sarda, aye.
Sarda is aye. Mybaum?
Mybaum is aye.
Mybaum is aye. Minor?
Minor, aye.
Minor is aye. Mojer?
Mojer, aye.
Mojer's aye. Schramm?
Schramm, aye.
Schramm is aye. Weber?
Weber is aye.
Weber is aye. Benson?
Benson, aye.
Benson is aye. Mayor Johnson?
Johnson, aye.
Mayor Johnson is aye. New Business Item 4-4 passes 9-0.
All right, there's no other business on tonight's agenda, so I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
Sarda moves to adjourn.
Weber, second.
We've got a motion and a second. Al, roll call, please.
Okay, this is roll call on the adjournment of the meeting on February 8th. Sarda?
Sarda, aye.
Sarda is aye. Mybaum?
Mybaum is aye.
Mybaum is aye. Minor?
Minor, aye.
Minor is aye. Mojer?
Mojer, aye.
Mojer's aye. Schramm?
Schramm, aye.
Schramm is aye. Weber?
Weber is aye.
Weber is aye. Benson?
Benson, aye.
Benson is aye. Brunick?
Brunick, aye.
Brunick is aye. Mayor Johnson?
Johnson, aye.
Mayor Johnson is aye. Adjournment of the meeting passes 9-0.
This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Take care.